Okay, it is 6:01 PM on Tuesday, March 25th, 2025. We'll call the common council meeting to order. Let's stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Middleton.
Here.
Parkin.
Here.
Ramano.
Here.
Weagle.
Here.
Robinson.
Here.
So glad to see all of you, by the way, because we have minutes from February that hasn't been given before for a while. So first up here are the minutes from February 25th. Any changes or corrections? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Still move.
Motion by Jenny, seconded by Tad. Further discussion? All those favors shall be the usual sign. Jenny, Tad, and Dan approve.
Abstain.
And Leslie and Jennifer abstain. Next up are the minutes from our package meeting on March 11th. Were there any changes or corrections to that? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
Which by Jennifer, seconded by Leslie. Further discussion? All those favors shall be the usual sign. Leslie, Jennifer, Dan approve. And Tad and Jenny abstain. Thank you. Okay, next up is John Goats with the annual MS4 report. And that is in your packets.
Well, I just wanted to go over a few things in the annual activities report. Give you an opportunity to ask any questions that you might have about the report and what we're doing as far as the stormwater program. One thing that's come up recently is we were contacted by IDEM's stormwater coordinator for MS4s, and we're going to be audited again this year. So they will audit the public education, the public participation, with the discharge detection elimination and municipal operations programs. So I think we're in relatively good shape, but there's a few things that she noted in our last audit that we need to make sure that we've followed through on. So we have not scheduled a time for that yet, but that's coming up. We're in the third year of the current MS4 permit, and so the next one, if things go the way they're supposed to, would start in 2026. And IDEM's been considering developing tiers based on population and the type of MS4 entity so that they can make a little allowance for smaller communities as opposed to larger communities and what they might be required to do. Just because I recognize that smaller communities don't have the budget and the staff that the larger communities do. So hopefully, they'll be able to follow through on that. We have proposed some changes to the stormwater ordinances. We were supposed to have that done in 2024, and we're running a little bit behind on that. In the meantime, the state legislature has passed or has proposed a couple of bills that might affect some of the ordinances. And so I'm not quite sure how those are gonna pan out yet. But so we'll have to take a look at those and see what they might do.
Is that the no more stringent than?
Yeah, they like that. They like that language, no more stringent than. There's one House Bill 1037 that would say that any community, not just MS4s, but any community can't have construction stormwater requirements more stringent than the construction stormwater general permit by IDEM. Well, that permit is supposed to change every five years, so they're kind of tying that. And the permit, there's a lot of things in the permit that in the construction stormwater general permit that aren't covered. The people that put forward the permit, they think of it as just being erosion and sediment control, but it actually covers all of stormwater. So it's not clear to me, anyway, if they're saying, well, you know, like, we charge a fee for construction stormwater permit review and stuff, and IDEM only charges like $100 for their reviews. Well, are they saying that we can no longer charge our fee?
Because there's a lot more work that we do on all those construction sites to monitor and stuff.
Yeah, and that was one of the things in the fiscal note on the bill is they said they weren't clear on what the potential fiscal impact would be on the different communities. So to me, it doesn't make much sense, but that's one. Another one is that's been, it's passed through committee in both the House and the Senate, is Bill 1460. And that one says that communities, local units of government, have to put in their storm, in their subdivision control ordinance that they're gonna use FEMA floodplain and the NOAA precipitation values to calculate and regulate stormwater. And so I'm not really sure what the floodplain has to do with the calculation of stormwater. But that's gonna be, and to my way of thinking, neither one of those things really belongs in the subdivision control ordinance, anyway. But so if that passes, I'm not sure how communities will respond to that.
Will you do me a favor? Will you move the microphones under your?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Well, just give you, just move it to the side or something.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that the video can pick you up.
Okay.
You're good. You're good. Thank you.
Okay. So we did do a water characterization report in 2024. We had to update that. And so I've got that. Would like to post that on the webpage. I haven't done that yet. It continues to look like we're seeing some benefit as far as reductions in E. coli from the long-term control plan. So that, we'll keep an eye on that, but I'm hopeful that that will continue to be the case. Public education, outreach, participation. There's a few things that we could improve in that program just to get some more public education and get the public more involved. We didn't do the First Friday. We went to First Friday in 2022, but we didn't do it, or in 2023, but we didn't do it last year partly because I had the heart surgeries. So maybe we'll try to do something at First Friday again this year. We stepped up a little bit in cooperation with Austin Bab and the pre-treatment coordinator on trying to make sure that restaurants were responding to the grease ordinance and doing what they need to do to keep their grease traps maintained because there's been issues with grease clogs in the sanitary sewers. So it seems like we're getting more cooperation from them as far as them turning in reports about maintenance on their grease traps. So that's been positive.
I know I had had a conversation with our pre-treatment coordinator about that, and there are a couple of areas that he's really trying to kind of pinpoint.
Yeah.
Working through that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Illicit discharge detection elimination. There really aren't too many changes to the storm, to the ordinance for that. So we're in pretty good shape on that. We do need to update our MS4 map, and so hopeful that we can get that done soon. Construction site, stormwater runoff control. I think things have slowed down a little bit, but maybe they're gonna pick up again as far as development and projects. So did inspections at 13 sites last year, and we had several of them that were completed and are gonna be, have filed notice of termination or be terminated from their IDEM permits. And the post-construction program continues to grow. I think we're up to about 17 sites that we're gonna be participating in the post-construction inspection program this year. Each site that has a detention basin or some other kind of water quality structure is supposed to do an annual inspection. And so we've been having them do a checklist and return it to us so we can keep on track with that as far as reporting that to IDEM. And then municipal operations. We're in pretty good shape on that. The main thing is that we need to be a little more diligent about documenting the things we're doing as far as operations that help improve stormwater. Does anybody have any questions about the MS4 report? Stormwater program?
Anybody have any questions?
Just giving updates on the monthly report after we had our meeting with the ordinance changes. So I think I should have.
Okay.
Could the stormwater changes?
Yeah, that's it.
Oh, that we were talking about.
Yes, I'm on that thing.
Okay.
Do you think we'll be able to have those on the place or anything?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, if you have any questions about, I tried to kind of explain what my approach and what I was thinking.
I might. There was a couple things. I might be in touch with you.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Okay.
I do have one question, John.
Yeah.
How long are you gonna stick with it?
Well, yeah, it's kind of a year-by-year decision, so.
So you're committed for at least another year. That's what I hear you say.
Well, yeah, I'm on board until November, so.
Okay, okay. Good, good. Thank you, John. Appreciate your time. Okay. Next up, Nikki from First, or First Friday Annual Report, which is, I think, Columbia City Connect, right? Columbia City Connect Annual Report. Yeah. Yes. And that should be in front of you. Yes. Okay. Take it away.
Hi, I'm Nikki Keister. I'm the director of Columbia City Connect, our Main Street program here in Columbia City. And I was just wanting to stop by to tell you what we've been up to. We have our 2024 annual report out, and I'm pretty proud of the work that we were able to do in 2024. One of the new initiatives was we did a downtown interior historic tour where we got to go up in the second floors of a lot of the buildings in our downtown. So we got to see renovated funds, like Joanne Byrd opened up her Airbnb, and we got to go through that. She made sure that nobody got to, she reserved it for us so we could go through all three of the Airbnbs. And that was really nice. We got to see the newly renovated apartments, a couple of them. And then we got to see some that were not renovated, which was neat because I think it spurred a lot of exciting ideas. I know a couple of people are like exploring the idea of renovating a second floor. So that was a really fun tour. It was unique. We got to go for a tour inside the courthouse. There had two in there. And then we got to go through the Thomas Marshall House, and the haunted jail gave a not haunted tour. So that was really cool, and it was really different and neat. And then so First Fridays continued, but one exciting thing was we had a BMX stunt show out, and that was really fun. We got to give out 250 helmets to kids, and the stunt guys were really great. They all had helmets, and they talked about how fun bikes are and to get out and play and wear their helmets. So that was a really good time. So that was just a couple of the new things that we did in 2024. In 2025, we are going to host a youth entrepreneurial market called the Launchpad, and it will be during First Fridays. It will be in the art alley between the Government Center and Reinhold's Furniture, where students can come and set up a booth for free and sell the things that they've made. So that's gonna be exciting. And Steamroller Party is happening in September, where we're going to make some art for the steamrollers. So that will be fun. And so if you have any question, thank you for your support, and let me know if you have any questions or comments about.
Questions of Nikki. Jennifer, I see you bumping around there.
Not really, not really a question. But just like, you guys are doing really great stuff and really adding to the excitement of downtown, and it's really good to see and fun to watch.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Well, we're gonna go ahead and, Tamela Center here, do you want to just go now? Instead of bringing the public comment, probably be valuable, I think. So come on up, and then you can kind of talk about, talk to the council about what you're proposing or thinking or wanting them to consider, if you will.
Okay. Tamela Center. So I live at 202 North Fine Street, which is the big blue house right by the Government Center. So we were looking into getting a fence, and due to the code, the code is written that it can't be over three feet unless it's chain link fence. So based on standards, right now, I could put a four-foot chain link fence in my yard. This would be our front yard or side yard. Unfortunately, that's not going to look the best. I am proposing a iron rod fence. The iron rod fence is visibility, it would be the same as the chain link fence. We are nowhere near the sidewalk. We're about, I think, 12 feet on one side and 15 feet on the other side from the sidewalk, at least. So it would not be a visibility issue. I'm looking just in the, getting the code changed because I've talked to other people in town who have fences. Some have chain link fence in their front yard, and the reason they did that is because of the code. I don't feel like, especially with my house, an older home, that chain link is going to look very well. It's not going to be a good selling point. Everyone parks right at my house, right by my house, in front of my house for First Fridays, for the fair, because I'm right at the Government Center parking lot. So I just don't think that that's what we want Columbia City people looking at when they go to Columbia City is seeing a big silver chain link fence in my yard. I do need four feet because I do have dogs who unfortunately are jumpers. I have been measuring where they jump at. Four feet would be fine. Three feet, we're just right there at pushing it. So I'm just looking into a change of code because I'm not sure why we are pushing chain link fence in Columbia City versus an iron rod fence, which looks much nicer. So instead of going the route of getting a variance, I just kind of want to push a change of code for what I think is right.
So for additional context, the Board of Works at the last meeting approved the, approved a four-foot iron rod fence in her side yard. But because of how the property is and where the house is, the side yard is actually the Line Street side of her yard. So she is bordered by Line Street and Jackson Street, okay? So the front yard is actually going to Jackson Street. And because it's the front yard, the code, and Nathan, feel free to correct me if I say anything wrong. The code specifically states right now that individuals can have up to a three-foot, let's say, regular fence, if you will, but anything above that has to be chain link in the front yard because you have to have visibility and line of sight. So in talking to Tamela, and I think she has a good point, is that, you know, is, do we have an interest in continuing to have chain link fences in our front yards across the city? Or as long as there's some visibility, like a iron rod fence of sorts that you can still see through, then does that make sense to include that or have at least some modifications to the actual subdivision code? Now, I'll say, I'll say this is, keep in mind that when it comes to right-of-ways and things like that, any kind of encroachment into the right-of-way still has to be approved by Board of Works. And we had a sort of an iron rod fence taken, that was put up at the southeast corner of Jefferson in Line Street, but that fence was actually not put in the right position, in the right space, even though the Board of Works had approved a specific location. They did not put it in the specific location, which is why it's no longer there. So I say all that just to say that I told Tamela when we spoke about it, I said, you know, really, the council has two options. The first option is to say, go through the variance process and get approval from the BZA on that variance, right? Or the other option is, is to recommend to the Plan Commission to revisit this ordinance and to consider other materials or types of fences. So that's kind of why I asked her to come tonight to kind of give, to give kind of what the situation was. Ultimately, this is an ordinance issue. It's not a, it's not an administrative matter from my side. It's an ordinance issue. And so I thought it would be best for her to present that to you. So.
I think that makes sense. There's like another option. I don't like the way that a.
Chain link fence, Lisa.
I don't think a chain link fence is what we would look at.
Because I brought a picture of a chain link fence.
I have a picture of what, it's actually aluminum, but it is, looks a lot like a.
Iron rod.
Yes.
I think that looks, it looks a lot better.
Yeah, I think that'd be a substantial upgrade over a chain fence.
And as far as like fitting kind of a historical aesthetic, like that looks like something that might have existed.
It has more curb appeal.
Yeah. So the idea would be is that if, so again, the idea would be that the council would formally or informally suggest to Nathan and to the Plan Commission through your Plan Commission members that, that the code be revisited in that regard. And I'll say on top of that, it's, the issue is actually already on the next Plan Commission agenda to be discussed. But I think it's helpful for the Plan Commission. Again, I won't speak for the Plan Commission members, but I think it would be helpful to have at least a lawyer in the council as to what kind of idea, and it sounds like you kind of already have said that, but I just want to kind of give some additional comments as to why this is here in front of you.
Nathan, do you need like something formalized from us, or?
Because it's already on the Plan Commission's agenda consensus, I think, would be sufficient. If it wasn't, I'd say, yeah, you probably should take the formal action, but they're already aware of it.
Yep. So is it the consensus of the council to recommend to the Plan Commission to make some modifications to what are the appropriate materials for a front, for a front yard fencing, for a fence, if you will? Yes?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. Does that give you enough right now, Nathan?
Yes. It'll be discussed with Plan Commission at their meeting, and we'll figure out where to go from there.
Okay. So Jennifer and Dan and Chip, as the Plan Commission members from the council, I think that probably makes no sense for you guys to be a part of that conversation, obviously.
Absolutely.
Anything else for us at the moment?
Nope, I think that's it.
There you go. Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, well, we'll go to department reports. Gary.
All right, we have three applicants going to the Board of Works interviews on Monday, the 31st of March. Excited to get those guys interviewed, and hopefully, they come on board and get us full staff. Officer Ewing has been released to solo eval through his FTO process, and he'll be doing that through his probationary period. Sergeant Crabtree is 2024 Drug Recognition Expert of the Year for the state of Indiana, and he was awarded and recognized by the Indiana Criminal Justice Institute. So great job there. I'm so proud of him. And what a drug recognition expert does is he goes out and, you know, traffic stops, he sees people impaired driving as far as on narcotics or something of that sort. So, and then any, anytime they think that someone's involved in an accident or maybe on drugs, they call him out. He goes out and does his test, and then he can testify as an expert.
Gotcha. Awesome.
That helps us. I have filed a victim's assistance affidavit with the Whittaker County Prosecutor's Office to replace two tires that were damaged in a pursuit. So we're gonna get restitution for that. Tornado sirens, we got two of them that are being assessed because they're having some issues with them. And that's over here on the west side of town. So Wednesday, I think, is their protected date of finding out what's wrong with them and giving us a quote to fix them.
Question of Gary. Thank you. I'm gonna jump to Mike Shoda.
We have, we had to move a water main that supplied the new building that school bought down here on Radio Road. It was in the wrong place so that they could not put a storm drain in. So we moved it and had to put a new valve on it also while we were doing it. That took like three or four days to do because we couldn't get the water shut down.
My water got shut off.
Yeah. Not the first day, though. Also, we've, we've had two or three lead lines that we've taken out of service and replaced in the last two or three weeks.
Great. Question of Mike. Mike, you're dismissed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chip?
I have nothing to report.
That's not true.
The trail's coming along very quickly. We had last week a couple issues, just a couple small ones that have been, I think, fixed, and so we should not have any more of those issues. Skate park is moving along very quickly, too. We've been blessed with good March weather. Hopefully, it stays good through the rest of Memorial Day. And other than that, we're getting ready. We closed applications for the community engagement specialist, and so we're gonna start going through the applicants and interviewing people. So hopefully, by the next meeting, we'll have somebody hired for that. So other than that.
I think Shoda applied for that, didn't he? Question of Chip. Thank you.
That'd be a good thought when Mike retired.
Bring them close together. That's a good idea. Kelly.
Yes, we've, we've had a guy working on trying to get a CDL license, and he's been working very hard on it the last few weeks. Mike also has a guy that's been working on it. But Noah took his driving test today and passed.
Good. Congratulations.
That was, that was good. We have two guys that are gonna, we thought we were done cutting trees, but I think there's two more on the list.
I want to thank the Lectorton Street Department for that, too. Sorry.
So we'll be working on that this week. And then Matt's been needing a little help over at the park back with the dugouts. He came to me yesterday, and I cut a couple guys loose. Jason and Tony are gonna be working over there trying to help with some concrete work. Hopefully, can get that moving along. And then Leaf Mulch, I think the company's coming in from Ohio at the end of this week or the first and next to grind leaves. And then starting to get some 50/50 sidewalk applications in. So we got some concrete work out at Eagle Blinn, and then 50/50 sidewalks will be coming along. And then just run the sweepers as much as we can right now, get the stuff out of the storm drains.
Yep, yep. Questions of Kelly. Thank you. Matt.
Most of the bathrooms will be open. We ran into a problem. The guys, when they went and raised it, there was a new guy that did it. He didn't realize to take the whole thing apart before you put it in the water. And so he put the whole mechanism in the water, batteries and the boards and everything. So we're letting all them dry out and making sure that they, they work. I'm sure we'll have a couple that won't, but that'll prolong the opening up of the bathrooms just, just a little bit. Like Kelly said, he, I called him yesterday to come down and look at maybe how he can help do the concrete around the dugouts once they get built up. The mason has been in and finished one dugout. He's on the second one. He was only in for like three hours today. So I've got a list of people from Kelly and from Chris Lawson that I'm gonna reach out to and see if they can't come in and just get it done. Get it all over with. Softball, and that is in full swing. And actually, we have our first tournament the weekend of the 19th, 17th, 18th, 19th. So we have to try to have those.
All ready.
All ready to go, all the fields, so. And then our season starts the 28th of April. So we're kind of under a timeline there. So and then, like Chip was saying, the trail's moving along pretty fast.
Question of Matt.
I do have one question. Just because there was a lot of people there last night. How does enrollment look for the softball and baseball teams? Is it up from last year?
We're up this year. We're 546 kids enrolled in softball, baseball.
Thank you. Yeah, there were a lot of people there last night, so good turnout.
Yeah, this is the first time in a handful of years that we had softball and baseball at the same night. Normally, we do them separate nights. So that was a good, it was a good move that we had it in the gym and not the Carter Center. We probably wouldn't have fit in there.
Any other questions? Thank you. Mike Cook.
I meet tomorrow with the engineering on the fourth main project.
I meet tomorrow with the engineer on the force main project. And they've also started restoration on that road today. So I was glad to see that. We'll get that wrapped up. Our CSO operational plan I've been talking about is in the hands of IDAM under review right now. I have no idea when that's going to come back. To say huge thanks and a few to my staff. Last Friday morning, they came in and the main gate on our headworks facility, there's underneath, it's an automated valve and underneath that is called a drive nut. And that had stripped out and the gate was all the way closed. They disassembled everything, put a new drive nut in it, greased it, had it back in operation by 8:22.
Wow.
And that's the first time they have actually done that repair by themselves without somebody knowing what's going on, that they were shown several, oh geez, probably eight years ago on how to do it and hadn't touched it. And less than an hour and a half, it's back up and running.
That's awesome.
Great group of guys.
What would have happened if they had not fixed it?
We were backing up into the EQ basin and then we would have started discharging there and that whole other set of problems.
Yep.
But no, they're good at what they do. Let's see. I wasn't going to report on the digress, but I got a phone call this afternoon from the project manager on that. And they're having an internal meeting themselves on Thursday to come up with a plan, dates and everything like that. So hopefully the next meeting, I can have some dates and
Good.
I stressed to her on the importance of that I needed a start date of when they was going to take it off because everything else just rolls down the line, so. And she understands that, so I think it's going to work out okay. I had an employee that went today and took a state certification exam in Fort Wayne and he passed. So he will be
Congratulations.
Moving from a class one to a class two.
Awesome.
So that gives everybody has a class three license and that's two class two operators. And I know one of them's going to go on for a class three, so I'm going to have a class three operator.
Very good. And what do you have to have to run the plant? What do you have to have to run the plant?
Class three.
Class three operator?
Yep. They started putting UV bulbs in today. They done the installs on that. And then just real quick, do you want me to do this now or do you want me to wait till?
Please do it now.
All right. You've heard me report on when we picked the force main for steel dynamics, cleaned the force main. So what I brought along, this is a pig. It's just, it's foam, sawed. And we have two pig launching stations, one at 700 East, that's a steel mill, and one on 300 South. And then my staff will go out there and they have to set up confined space because it is underground in a vault. And they will go in there and they will open that up, prep it, put this on the inside, which this is a transmitter. They'll put that in there, seal this up, which it's not watertight, but the transmitter itself is watertight. Put it inside the launching unit and send it down to force main. And then that gets tracked from the time it starts there until it gets to where it discharges at the, the next location. The one guy, he'll, they'll track that all the way. And if it doesn't, you know, come to the next spot, then they'll have to go back. Basically, you try to find out where it is if it would happen to get stuck. If it does get stuck, we don't dig up the line. We send another pig in. And we've been told that once, if you have one to get stuck, you send there a pig through, it'll push both of them out. You don't have to worry about it. Rarely do you happen to dig a line up.
And if the second one gets stuck, you have to send a third one, right?
As soon as the second one gets stuck, I'm going home. But no, we've never had an issue and they tumble and they won't stay, you know, in this position all the way through. They'll actually fold over and roll and everything else as they go through there. And when they come out, they look like they were pulled through just a tiny knuckle. Sometimes I see where they had chunks out of them. Typically, we can get two uses out of a pig. These that we bought this year, they were, they're about 140 apiece. We have to pay extra because of the cavity, they cut that in and install that extra for our transmitter. If we didn't have to have that, they'd be, I think they're right around 100, just under 100. But with the transmitter, it makes them more.
And what do they look like when they, besides being small? Do they look, are they pretty nasty or are they?
They do?
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be black when it comes out. Kind of a black color. But then, then there's a cap that goes on the end and the guys will put an eye bolt on this and then put a short section of rope on it. So that rope also goes through there at the same time. And all that is, it just makes it easier when it comes out that they can grab the rope and pull it out of the catch. And then we take them back to the plant and we'll tie them up off that rope and then they just drip dry. They'll hose them off and then, you know, just keep hitting them with water and then they'll just hang dry. And if they're in good enough condition, we use them twice. I don't allow them to use them any more than two times.
Sure.
So we buy four of them every year. The steel mill buys them, you know, at the area. They get charged for materials and stuff like that. So I mean, I say that we buy them, but actually they, it's in their bill that we send them at the end of the year. So yeah, we could try to use them twice unless they're, you know, ripped up and stuff like that. I'm afraid that, you know, because they would get in there, get in an area where their water would travel around it, then that's when it's going to cause it to get, you know, essentially stuck. But so far
I didn't say, yeah.
That's all I have, unless you have questions.
Questions of Mike or his pig? Okay. Thanks, sir. Much appreciated. I'm afraid to ask, but Tom?
This one has only been used once. And if you want to have it carried around for a sniff test, I'm sure Mike would like.
I did not bring it used on.
Mayor, I've got to tell you, that report we think we sent to you, I didn't realize that if you type too much of one thing, you can't see it.
Oh, okay.
So I will
Was there more in there that I didn't know?
There was.
Okay.
So I apologize for this, but Toby's still working on the Sierra Wireless stuff. The one that was on 101, we got back, you know, free build from the company or it was a replacement. I don't remember. I'm pretty sure he said it was a replacement. It has been online for five days and dropped once. We were losing connection to the city like every 15 to 20 minutes. So that's a big plus. Now the one on two is doing the same thing, so we're probably going to have to go through the same steps, which I'm sure he's looking forward to because his last conversation, when he was on the phone with Sierra Wireless, he was on the phone with them for six and a half hours and he loves it. We're still waiting on the test results for one of our three candidates so that we can start up all three at the same time. Two have been sent to state birth to get approved. The other one, when we get their medical physical back, we'll send it to the state to get approved and get them going. I think I told you guys the last time that we had four air packs in for repair. We sent 10 bottles at that time to get hydroed. Those came back, I want to say it was Friday. I'm confident it was Friday, Thursday or Friday, that we sent, got those 10 back and we sent another 10 bottles to get hydroed. Every five years, you've got to send them in and check to see if they will explode, which is very, makes you feel good. And then I'm trying to remember what else was in there. March, I'm sorry, April 15th, Forge Fire will be here to start the repair on our training facility. Thank goodness. I did make a phone call and kind of urged them along to get us on the schedule. So I have gotten pictures that are, are replacement canister for the bottom one that's been painted and waiting and waiting for the crew to get back from Mississippi to come in and start getting that done. I don't remember what else was on that. I apologize.
Sounds like I missed half of it anyways. It says, it sounds like I missed half of it anyways, so.
Yeah. Fair. And we have four guys, and I think I've been reporting on this as well. We have four guys that have been away every Tuesday and Thursday morning getting their certified fire investigators. So it kind of makes their schedule a little tight, but we're getting through it.
Talk about Chris?
Oh, yes. Last Thursday, Chris retired. The mayor is gracious enough, we're going, we started a tradition on our department that when guys retire, they will go out of service permanently. And the mayor was in dispatch to receive his, his OOS, so that was pretty awesome. It's a, it's definitely a moment for police and fire to go out of service.
Question to Tom? Thank you. Marsha?
Nothing.
Rosie?
If you'd use your iPad, I'd read that.
It's the same thing. I think it's the program.
I don't know.
I see. Sean's report, they, he, well, he had said they thought, he thought they were down to one tree, but apparently they're not down to one tree left. Stump grinding is hopefully going to begin in, in maybe two weeks or so. They changed out three poles, working on a mutual aid ordinance that probably will be on your agenda for the next meeting. That's just to really stipulate when we, you know, in the case where we send individuals to other places, like what that payback feature is for that other community, just to kind of protect ourselves. Plus FEMA, I think mandates it in some way, shape or form. Say what? If we still have FEMA, we'll see. It may have gotten dosed. So we do have, I made dove into a, into a verb. We, we have now taken possession of fuel keys for the Whittaker County fueling station. As you may remember, we're moving our departments to start fueling at the county fueling station. The reason for that is because it's a cheaper price and it gets us out of having to do IDAM reports and stuff for our underground storage tanks. So Sean is working on probably a three to four months from now is when we'll try to work on getting those tanks out of the ground. We're kind of good to go until November, no matter what at the moment, but we want to start moving. I think we're going to do, maybe move the electronic piece of the keys and stuff for our system, maybe over to the park if we can figure out a way to do that for the mowers and the minor equipment that doesn't need to, you know, go clear out to the county for that or to the county maintenance facility or the, I'm sorry, the fueling station, so. So we are working through that. He is getting some quotes to replace some transmission poles. There are some pretty high dollar estimates that he's hoping to get some better estimates coming in here shortly. And he did say that softball and track for his kids are kind of in full force. So he's going to be a little spotty in attendance and I've given him that ability. Bid package for the tree truck is complete and hopefully bringing that to the Board of Works next month. Bucket truck that was ordered in January of '24 is expected to be delivered in June of this year. And so I think that's about it from Sean's report. For me, I will be for the third time in four weeks going down to Indianapolis tomorrow to talk to our legislators some more about stuff, this time on behalf of the Mayor's and Commissioners Caucus of Northeast Indiana. We had, we had a meeting today, Rosie and I and Beth had a meeting today with Gibson just to kind of go over where we're at for the health insurance claims for this year. We're in good shape at the moment, not going to be compared to last year. So we'll see where that goes. I also met on Monday with Jim Johnson, who is the new Whittaker County Council on Aging resident, chairman, CEO, whatever. So they're looking to do some additional things from a senior center standpoint in our community, which is good. This Thursday, I will be at some kind of EMA training for the, for like all day. So we'll see how that goes. And then I have, I'm hosting a marriage roundtable on Friday for Northern Indiana. Let's see, anything else I need to let you know about? I can't think of anything else. I am going to ask you, please kindly, if you'll look at your, I say this as a friend, if you kindly look up in your space, if you can kind of clean up the area of the council table a little bit, that would be great. I appreciate that. And besides that, you don't have to do it now. But if you would do that, and, and again, I just, I, I am always thankful and reminded of how appreciative I am to have a council that trusts me and, and Rosie and just how well we work together as a lot of officials. A lot of places don't have that luxury. And so I don't, I don't want to miss an opportunity to say thank you for working well with me and trusting me in, in how we lead the city together. So thank you. That's all I got to say. Dan? Jennifer?
Tree Board met last week and they are busy planning Arbor Day activities in April. Also working on something new that will be like a, a door hanger. So if you get a city, city tree
City tree, yes.
Planted at your house, they'll have some instructions on how to take care of that tree.
Okay.
Hopefully as a way to involve the homeowner and also like make sure that our investment in trees is
Yeah. Stop, Dan. That's not what we want, Dan. Yeah. But your side yard is not, is not the city red.
Do not eat city trees and mistreat it in any way.
Yes, yes.
Not encourage the citizens.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Ted?
I have nothing.
Thank you. Jenny?
I have nothing.
Leslie?
Sarah Ward, we met last week. Our next meeting will be April 15th. You'll have a public hearing and second reading of the ordinance that will impose $100 per day for those that have not connected. So we'll see how the public hearing goes.
I'm sure that will be lots of fun. I, maybe you have already done this, but are you able to continue serving on such board when you transition to your new position? Yes, you are able to do that.
Unless somebody else wants to.
Well, I knew that was probably coming, but
I don't believe you need shoes to film.
I will tell you, Harley went with me to the last meeting and she's like, oh, it's going to be like council. It was an hour and a half meeting and she's like, this is stressful.
I got you. Okay. Thank you very much. Donnie, have anything else to add?
No.
Okay. So we have no press and so we will call the meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.